Welcome to the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, June 6th. I have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Jeffrey. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord. Lord, we thank you for all of the blessings that you have bestowed on our community. We thank you, Lord, for each person who is here today at the City Council meeting. We pray for those in our community, Lord, that could be sick and are hurting, Lord. Lord, we pray for our military that is protecting us both here and abroad, and for wisdom for our nation, our state, and for us in this City Council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Just join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
All present.
Prove the minutes of May 16th, 2017, regular meeting in defense with the reading.
Sum of a second.
Counsel, please cast your vote. We have another...
Mr. Larkin.
I point them.
Thank you. Counsel, we have one add-on request. It would be item number 27 under New Business. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $120,000 to come from the 2017 sales tax bond issued to be used to provide for Benoit Bayou Drainage Study and mapping to be used as required for proper future development of lands generally located north of I-220 and between Airline Drive and Swan Lake Road, and that will be a first reading.
I move that we have this to the agenda.
Start there. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Need a motion to approve...
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
Questions? Counsel, please cast your vote. And we have with us Ms. Lisa Johnson, President of Bossier Chamber of Commerce. Welcome.
Thank you. So, there's your Be Bossier. And, just as we do it in Bossier, like a boss. This is my update for you on the marketing program that you're assisting us with. I'm Lisa Johnson, President of the Bossier Chamber, and it's a pleasure to be here today, Mr. President, Councilman, Mayor. And we are so excited about this program that you have entrusted us with at the Bossier Chamber to market and brand Bossier. And as you see, it is called bebossier.com. And when I came to you last year and I asked you for this funding, it was about building the foundation for this marketing platform. The foundation is being built, and it is growing every day. I'm going to throw a few numbers at you today to just let you know how things are going, and then tell you what we can anticipate next. So, this bebossier.com, this is a site that is a blog site where our consultant that we hired, and allow me to stop real quick and say thank you to Sarah A. Bear with All Y'all Media, is our consultant on this, and on behalf of our Marketing Chairman, Mike McSwain, who keeps us in tow all the time to make sure, and our Communications Director, Jessica Hemingway, between these three individuals, I have no chance in the world of anything because they're making sure that we are doing the work for you and the people's work. And so, with this blog that has been created with bebossier.com, it was stood up in mid to late March. We have had, we've got 20 posts already on there. The purpose of this is to post good news stories, and it's freelance writers that are assisting us with that about Bossier City and Bossier Parish. So, 20 posts are up, and without any really good marketing and paid-for promotion, we are seeing that our top visitors to the website are Bossier City, obviously, with 30, right at 33%, and Dallas is at 27%. And then we have Shreveport and Houston right behind that. So, markets that we know that are very familiar to us and looking at our area for whatever type of relocation, if it's residential or for business. Now, how do we make that go viral? We talked about a lot, I talked about, when I came to you, a lot of social media, Facebook, Instagram, and things of that nature. Facebook is the most easiest place to do these types of videos and share these posts. So, on the blog, we have entrepreneurs in Bossier only that have done business with the city, opened their business here, and we do a Facebook Live video with them, Q&amp;A, with our host being Sean Green, and then these videos continue to get traction because they're the boss. The root word of Bossier is boss. So, like a boss, we're getting great response from that. The Sheriff Daryl video, like a boss, has reached, and this one was just done Memorial Day, has reached nearly 1,500 with 567 unique viewers, 63 views, but it was shared 13 times. And Military with Barry Regula was done as an honorary commander of the 93rd Squadron, reached over 4,000 folks with 25 likes and 16 shares for a total of 19 shares. And our very first one was with Grant Knuckles with Twisted Root, and it reached nearly 10,000 people, 4,400 views, 22 shares. So, that kind of gives you an idea of the videos. Now, when we share our blog stories, those good news stories from the bebossier.com, we have a blog on there that's called Five Hidden Gems in Bossier, talking about these unique places in Bossier. And it had 94 shares on Facebook, and it's still growing today. I've already updated these numbers since we prepared this as of yesterday, and it needs to be updated again. And that's what it's about, is going viral, sharing this information. Yesterday, I shared because we had a new blog come up, and crime and statistics and all are a hot topic in northwest Louisiana, and criminal justice reform is a hot topic at the state legislature. And so, a blog was written about, is Bossier safe? Here's what the statistics say, and it is a great story with the growth that's happening in this area, how we maintain and keep those numbers in check. That was shared 22 times from the original page, and from one of those shares, it was shared another 17 times with positive comments all along. So, this is what we're looking for. This is what we're wanting to go viral, and we're wanting folks to see. With our Barksdale Air Force Base, with the open house of the airshow, we did a very simple video of the bombers coming across, and reached over 56,000 people, 20,000 views, 173 shares. So, it tells you where the folks are interested in. So, we're getting more military, we're getting more education stuff up on there about our public education. Since we've launched this campaign the last day of March, the Be Bossier campaign has been up on the Bossier Chamber billboards, and Lamar donated a few more as well. There have been over 27,000 spots on local billboards to share the good news with a value of almost $10,000 that has come through the Bossier Chamber and Lamar in assisting through this program. So, we're trying to do our part as well in being your partner. What's next is we have an annual manual that's coming out that will talk about the area and with all the statistics and the listings and great pictures and all that kind of good stuff because people still want something in hand. We have a new video series that's coming out that we can't share with you just yet in a public forum, but if you want to call me one at a time, I might give you a hint. But we want it to be a big splash, and so, very excited about that. Merchandising is a top priority, which is something that we talked about, and then, believe it or not, as we've been doing this and Barksdale Air Force Base has been doing their meetings with their community partnerships, we're building an even more closer relationship with Barksdale for all of those folks that are moving into the area for all of the missions that we have out there. So, that kind of gives you an update on this as far as the budget goes. To do all of this, we've only spent about 16% of the budget thus far. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. A wonderful presentation.
Thanks, Lisa.
Y'all handle the rest of the day like a boss. Thank you.
Unfinished business?
Hearing of appeal to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located following legal address, 2390 Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana.
Good afternoon, counsel. This property was condemned back in November 7th of 2016 due to the condition of the structure, dilapidated, open, unsecured, and...
Robin Harville, counsel.
Been appointed to represent the owners.
We've been successful in providing notice to the conventional owner, Penn Tail Holdings Investments. Mr. Somma Stelli, representative of the company, is here today. What he has shared with me that apparently they've had a tenant that they've had some issues with that's supposed to have been working on this, but, so they're looking forward to judicially evict him so that they can undertake the appropriate repairs. And so, Mr. Stelli is here today to make that proposal to the council.
Who's the tenant, do you mind me asking? Unless you want to speak first.
No.
Y'all could state your name and address for the record, please.
Aaron Wilson, attorney for Penn Tail Land.
And your address?
707 Benton Road, Suite 125.
My name is Somma Stelli. I'm representing Penn Tail Holdings, LSC. I'm one of the member managers, and we're at 1815 Benton Road.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, the tenant is, excuse my pronunciation, it's Musley Alu Badi. And they did a lease-to-purchase agreement back in 2014. He has, he made substantial payments and was supposed to undertake the renovations of the property, but did not. It came to their attention, and their being, Penn Tail's attention, in May when they got received the letter from Ms. Harville that the repairs hadn't been made and that the property was condemned. They're in the process of filing a suit to evict him and to nullify the lease-to-purchase agreement, and once they have possession again, they will make the necessary repairs.
How long will that process take?
Well, we, we gotta, we have to get, a judge has got to let us have access back to the property. So, whenever that happens, I'll be meeting the, I'll be meeting my general contractor, it'll be federal construction out of Shreveport, Mark and Chase Pittman run that, and we'll be bringing that up immediately. I mean, I'll pull a permit and have people over there working.
When will you pull the permit?
As soon as we get possession, like, the day after.
60 days, 90?
90 days should be sufficient, and if it's not, we'll come back before the council and request additional time.
Has the lawsuit been filed?
It has not.
When is it going to...
Christopher Stahl is representing them in that suit. I'm just here on this matter today.
When is it supposed to be filed?
When he returns from the CLE in Florida that he's at.
You've had it since 2014, or they had it leased from you and they haven't made improvements? And you own the building, and y'all didn't know it?
I'm selling it to him on a lease-purchase agreement, and he was, under contract, he was supposed to make those repairs, show me proof of insurance.
So, he hasn't done that?
He has not done that.
Since 2014?
Correct.
And you didn't know it?
Well, I did know it. I've communicated with him multiple times, tried to give him, I mean, we tried to be fair. He put a substantial amount of money down, and I just tried to work with the guy, and as we get these code violations in, I would go back over there and talk to him, and it comes down to where I just had to take legal action.
I'm going to tell you, this is in my district, and it's about 10 years too late, in my opinion, of us condemning it. And Jimmy, if I can do it, I'd like to make a motion, we go ahead and tear down the building.
Yeah, I mean, I think if they, if these guys were representing what they represented, were in the process, they could have already filed suit, they could have already started the process, and they haven't. So, I mean, I think you're well within reason to make a motion to that affair.
Well, if I could say, I only bought the house...
Excuse me.
The property in 2014.
One second. Do I have a second? Well, I'll second it.
Have y'all...
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Okay. Go ahead, I'll ask counsel something in a minute.
I only bought the property in 2014. So, just a couple months after I bought the property, we went into this lease-purchase agreement, and the gentleman just hadn't pulled his part of the, his end of the deal, so we're trying to move on it.
It just seems 2014 is a long time not to do anything with it. You know, counsel, if you haven't gone by the city building, it's been a wreck for years, and I'm sure Mickey and Kenny would tell you that, I've been on them for years, get this thing, it's horrible. Just store junk, they store cars, that's, you know, needs to be hauled off. You know, it has been cleaned up lately, but nothing, it's still a condemned building, you know, so that's why I made the motion.
Pardon, so I can understand, you have been communicating with the owner?
No, with property standards.
Oh, okay.
The person that owned the building, well, I don't know, did Bill own it?
I'm, Bill Norris.
No, did he own it?
Yes.
Okay. Bill died a few years ago, and it was a wreck years before he passed away. I mean, again...
It does, since I've done lease purchases before, I don't, you don't necessarily follow those as closely as you might if it was just a lease, since the conclusion of your contract is you're separated from the property, and so, it's not, doesn't seem to me that it's unreasonable that they, you know, now that this has all come to their attention, that we should afford them the reason or the means to get the property back. But I was trying to make sure I understood what you're representing you're going to do. You're going to file suit, get the property back, and once you get the property back, you are representing to us that you're going to bring the property up to standards, is that right?
Absolutely.
What?
And I would just like to point out that the notice of condemnation was recorded in November, but Penn Tail was not made aware of it until May 2nd of last year, or of this year, when Ms. Harville sent them notification of it. The, all that was done was notices were posted, and Mr. Alu Badi is the only one that would have seen that.
Do you live in Bossier?
I do. I actually, I've lived in Bossier since I've lived here nine years, and then I just moved out to Kingston as a palatation.
See, Tim, that's what gets me. If you're a property owner and you got a lease purchase, don't you want to go by and see if that building's being taken care of or being upgraded at all in three years? We hadn't done that? Am I over the top or what?
Yes, I would just like to verify that...
Go ahead.
That the letter, the notice letter was signed for by an individual in their office after it was mailed on the 8th of November.
Of whose office?
Somebody did sign for the letter in their office to let you know that someone in their office was aware of this.
I was not aware of that just now, until now.
So, they did, so this has been going on since November?
Yes, sir.
Also, if we were to, if you do decide to let them have this thing and redo it, the estimate is $103,000 to fix it, and we would require a structural engineer to make sure that this thing was structurally sound before the permits would be issued for that kind of money, just to let you know.
Mr. Stelli is well aware of that.
What is the, what's the downside of, I mean, if it's, if they're representing that they're, they're trying to get legal possession of it, and then they're representing that they're going to fix it, what? So, the downside is just going to sit there during that period of time while they're getting possession of it? Is there any other? Maybe it's been there all this time, it seems to me that's...
The downside has been, yes, the downside is that it's been there for years and years and years that...
My question would be, what's 90 more days in that situation?
Because I'm tired of dealing with that one structure on the corner of Barksdale Boulevard right there.
I felt it necessary to bring it up.
Yeah, well, if you've been dealing with it as long as I have, it's horrible.
Yes, sir.
Even when the guy lived there, I knew he was horrible, you know?
Well, is there a, is there a drop-dead date that would come, I mean, would have, is it like, is it 90 days, and that, is all of this a...
Kind of at the mercy of the judge who hears it, and whenever my regular counsel, whenever Chris gets back in town and he files the suit, then we'll, I'll know more, but within 24, 48 hours of the judge giving us possession of the property, there'll be a permit pulled, general contractors will be in there working within a week. I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to wait, we're just going to get it done, you know?
Well, like Mickey said, you've got to have a structural engineer first come out there and...
Got to get a judge to give me possession of it first, and then we'll walk that out.
And how long will that take? I mean, we...
If Mr. Stahl filed suit tomorrow, when he got back, we could have a court date within four weeks.
So, 60 days would be plenty?
60 days would be plenty, but we would prefer 90 days to make sure that we don't run into any issues.
Why not 60, and you can come back if you're having issues?
60 would be acceptable as well.
Yeah, I need a little time.
Hey, I'm going to vote to tear it down, and if y'all vote to keep it, I would just want you to, I ask you in the same 60 days to go by and look at the building, you know, because it really, that hasn't been done, yeah.
What's the guarantee, Mr. Hall, that, what would we need in place to ensure that that's done, and if it's not, then...
Well, you can make an order to demolish, to demolish and suspend it for 60 days, and if the 60 days, the permit hadn't been taken out and all the accomplishments made, it'd be demolished. I mean, that has the fact that you've already taken action and suspended it for 60 days, let them have 60 days to do it. What is concerning to me is the representation is, we're in the process of filing suit, and whether Mr. Stahl's here or any other lawyers here, they could have filed suit before they showed up today to show they're in the, the process is actually being done. So, I can't tell you if it's going to be four weeks, eight weeks, whatever it's going to be. I don't even know what the process is under the agreement, but obviously, it's some kind of summary process if they can get a full week hearing. So, I mean, the only way to ensure that you don't go back through this process again is to order it to be demolished, but suspend it for 60 days to allow them to transfer title and take out a permit.
Y'all amend my motion to give them 60 days, draw, have it demolished, and give them 60 days to do it.
Suspend it for 60.
Suspend or demolish.
I second that motion.
Yeah, Mr. Williams, besides it being an eyesore, I'm wondering, after looking at the pictures, have we had any instances that have involved police and/or rescue? Have we had, is it a, is it a crack house or anything like that? I mean, is it being safe haven for...
I don't have any knowledge of anything like that. Of course, obviously, I wasn't prepared to address that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
That's all I had.
All right, the motion, just to clarify, is that if you hadn't started and pulled the permit, started construction in 60 days, then the building will be demolished?
Yes, sir. Sorry, sorry. Yes, sir.
So, I just want to make sure y'all are clear. Is that correctly stated, Mr. Hall?
There will be an order, the property be demolished and be suspended for 60 days to allow them to have transfer of title and take out a permit.
Right.
And if that's done, the order of demolition will be dissolved.
Okay. Fellas, are you clear on that?
Yes, sir.
But I don't understand that. If the, if 60 days gets here and they're, they're a week away or something from the process, so how does that, how does that operate? I mean, you just asked for 90, and so, what is the, like, in 60 days, no matter what happens, if we vote this way, that's gone, it wouldn't matter if he was a week away from getting it in 60 days, right?
Right.
I don't want to speak against that motion, it just doesn't seem fair to me, I mean...
He just, he just stated he needs four weeks to bring lawsuit and get it settled.
That may be an underestimate, but within 90 days, we can have something done, that's what I was trying to...
Guys, let me tell y'all something else. Sam has been, is Sam in here? Sam has been in the last several months, probably more than that, trying to clean up Barksdale Boulevard, these, all these tire shops and all these cars that I called in that the mayor knows, and, you know, we're trying to get it cleaned up, and things like this, it's not going to help me get that neighborhood cleaned up. That whole neighborhood has got houses that need to be tore down, and this is just one right on Barksdale Boulevard, you know, so...
Does he have an option, Mr. Hall, to stay our ordinance of condemnation in 60 days with the 26 judicial court?
Yeah, I mean, you can always apply for restraining order if you choose to do that.
So, he does have an avenue to stop the procedure if you don't get it done in 60 days, so... Anyway, is there any other discussion?
I don't have any further to add.
Any discussion from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, fellas.
Adopt an ordinance to approve the amendment of the utility-public-private partnership P3 owner-engineer agreement for $1,42,755 to be paid for out of the utility operating funds, amendment number one, owner-engineer agreement, final reading.
Sum of a second. Any questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars from the 2017 EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase Physio Control Titan 3G modems for use with Physio Control Life Pack 15 cardiac monitors, final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate sixty thousand dollars to come from the hotel motel tax fund to be used to purchase and install a new phone system for the Bossier City multipurpose arena Century Link, final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance assessing a three-dollar restoration fee on each ticket sold for any and all events at the Century Link Center, final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience?
Is that, any and all events leaves the latitude on those ones that we said were not doing this on? Is that... Does this change the...
Ticketed through Ticketmaster. Jimmy, please.
Yeah.
I know we've had a lot of discussions lately, but ticketed through Ticketmaster.
So, again, just, it caught my eye here that since it says each ticket sold for any and all events, doesn't seem to limit that. Is, am I reading that wrong?
What are you...
Is that a problem?
What are you looking at for an exception to that?
Like the home builders thing that we talked about and these events that they sell tickets to, there were a number of events that we said were not included in this. So, since this says any and all events, it seems to contradict that.
Well, I think Sam and Rebecca stated the same thing.
Yeah.
It's not a ticketed event. It's tickets that are given out, and I think David, one of the news, explained the same thing. Just ticketed events through Ticketmaster. The Home Builders Show, I think those tickets are given out there, so it's not a ticketed event through Ticketmaster.
And you can't buy them online like you can through Ticketmaster.
If that's, if this just doesn't cover that, that's fine. It just seems to contradict what we said, and if we're... So you're confident that things like that, this does not cover that?
Yeah, we've had about four thousand emails on these. I'm pretty confident that it won't cover those. And if there's some compliance issue with that, we'll come back and rectify.
We can always make an amendment to it.
Okay.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating ten thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance to co-sponsor the traveling Vietnam wall on June 8th through 13th, 2017, final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. No business?
I'm sorry, witness opening of sealed bids for Fort Smith Pool Rehab.
Good afternoon, counsel. The engineer's estimate for this job is two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and the approved budget is two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Oh, there were no addendums. The first bid is from Progressive Commercial Aquatics. It's for two hundred seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars, and the bid bond is included.
What was the budget amount?
Two seventy-five.
Okay. I just didn't see it. I may have weak accept the reading of this bid.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Witness opening of sealed bids for Innovation Drive Extension Phase One.
The engineer's estimate for this job is one million four hundred thousand, and the per budget is one million five hundred thousand. The first bid, oh, there was one addendum, and in that addendum, it deleted item number sixty-five and changed the description of item number sixty-six. The first bid is from Two R Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. It's for one million five hundred eighty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents.
Can you read that again?
One million five hundred eighty-seven thousand three twenty-seven point three-one.
Thank you.
The next bid is from Best Yet Builders. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for one million three hundred twenty-six thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars. The next bid is from CWNW Contractors. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for one million four hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. The next bid is from Boggs and Pool. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. One million two hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. The next bid is from David Lawler Construction. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for one million one hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars. The next bid is from Fessler and Bowman. They acknowledged the addendum, and the bid bond is included. It's for one million five hundred forty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars. The next bid is from FJ Burnell. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for one million one hundred twenty-eight thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and seventy cents. The next bid was done on Bid Sync. The bid bond was included. It's for JB James Construction. It's for one million seven hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And this is the last one. It's from Yorwick Construction. The addendum, they acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for one million three hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred eleven dollars. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Thank you all.
Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Sid's Oyster Barrel, location 2119 Airline Drive, Suite 100, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high and low content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a restaurant.
So move.
Second.
Gentlemen, this is a new restaurant venture for Bossier, Sid's Oyster Barrel, requesting alcohol on-premise consumption sales at their restaurant. It is over five hundred feet from the nearest church school or other entities we measure from.
Any questions? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Thank you, Sam.
Approved report of change order number one and final change order for the Six Fountain Sewer Pump Station for an increase in the amount of seven thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars. Total cost with change order, four hundred and twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance amending section six dash four, sale near schools, churches, etc. of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances to include a full-time daycare center as defined in revised statute seventeen colon four oh five A four, first reading.
So move.
Jimmy, was this requested by local daycares or...
This was actually an issue where we had a daycare that was a full-time daycare, and they were looking at putting an alcohol establishment. The state allows us the opportunity to forbid alcohol to be sold within three hundred, you know, feet of a daycare, and we thought it would be a good idea to prohibit that because the guidance under the statutes decided there requires there to be at least seven children and it'd be a full-time daycare. So it can't affect somebody just taking care of kids in a home that are there, but it stops alcohol from being sold right next to a place where kids are being kept.
Any other questions? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating forty thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance for a complete assessment of capability and vulnerability of information services and systems of the city of Bossier City, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing the sale of 707 Barstow Boulevard to Destiny Days Spa LLC for the appraised value pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute Thirty-three colon forty-seven twelve point two, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating fifteen thousand dollars from the EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase a liquid spring system for trauma five, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating eighty thousand dollars from the 2017 EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase two vehicles for the EMS division, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating six million dollars to come from the 2015 LCDA Capital Projects Fund and authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to acquire right-of-way property necessary for the Walter O. Big Big Carriageway, also known as Parkway Northern Extension Project, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to approve an amendment of the utility 2014 sewer contract for engineering with Mancheck Consulting Group Incorporated, agreement for four million five hundred seventy-four thousand two hundred dollars and forty-four cents, amendment number two, owner-engineer agreement, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to approve the installation of sewer service along Hope Street for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Scott, let me ask you maybe a couple of questions.
Sure.
How many people are gonna hook up to that line? Do you know, or have you...
Mrs. Collins is here, and if I could defer to her, she has exact, the exact numbers.
Ms. Collins, could you state your name and address, please, for the record? Thank you.
Brenda Collins, 2110 Hope Street. I am representing all of Hope Street, and there's five families here today. There are twelve names listed on the petition. I delivered to each of you on March the 10th, and I can tell you that all twelve of those families plan to hook up to the sewage. We have wanted this for over twenty-five years, so we are very eager to. There's only one family that is not. There's one home that's for sale just recently, and I have not been able to get in touch with that owner who lives out of town, but I feel like they will also wanna do that, but I can't say that, but I know twelve of us are.
And you're in the city limits, and you have city water.
We absolutely do. We absolutely do. And it has been in the city limits since. Rumor Calhoun purchased that property from the roamers, and we were in the city limits then. We didn't have city water. We fought for that for a long time, and were able to successfully get off of the South Bossier Water System and thankfully onto the city water system, and we just really need city sewage.
Well, I have to wait this long, I guess.
I didn't wait this long. We didn't wait this long. We asked for city sewage whenever we tried to get on city water, and we were turned down by the council. There's been two mayors, the Mayor Dement, I mean, we worked with Mayor Dement prior to Mr. Walker, and we've worked with our councilman. We thank Scott Irvin for bringing this to your attention, and we really appreciate any support that you can give us for that. We really need city sewage.
Yeah, I'd like to just add, you know, since it last came up, Parkway High School has been built, which isn't very far from your area.
That's exactly right.
And there's just one big tract of land now. Y'all used to be kinda out far, but you're not as far out as you were. The city has grown.
That's true, and there's the trailer park, Baccan Valley Trailer Park, that is further south than we are, on the other side of the highway, and they have been on city sewage for my twenty-five years of being there.
So it's just time to...
It's time. It's time.
Any other comments from the council?
What, I wanted to ask Mr. Hudson to share with the council what would be involved in installation of sewer.
Well, of course, no design has been accomplished yet, but we will, and I've visited with Ben Rochenbach about a couple of ways to provide sewer for Hope Street. One, my budget included a sewer main down the rear of each property line, both sides of the street. Felt like that would be the easiest way for the homeowners to hook up to the sewer main. There's issues with that. We would need to get an easement across the rear of every backyard, and if one homeowner didn't wanna grant us that easement, then that plan would not work. The conventional method is to lay one sewer main down one side of the street, and the homeowners hook up that way. That would be least expensive for the city, but it would cost more for the homeowners to hook up that way.
That's gonna be, going back to their land, probably the sewer, where they have to hook up in the back, that could be, what, five thousand dollars, four, five thousand dollars from the street back to their line we'll have to hook up to?
Well, I'm assuming you folks have septic tanks in your backyard.
We do.
So a plumber would have to disconnect from that and obviously come around the side of the house, own grade, and take it out to the street, which is a longer trip to run than if the sewer main were in the folks' backyards. But I think either way, a plumber's, I'm just guessing, it's gonna cost a little bit for plumbers to hook up.
We are aware of that, okay.
When they disconnect that septic tank, that septic tank has to be removed, doesn't it?
Councilman, I don't really know. I would think maybe they could be filled up with sand and left in place, maybe, but I don't, I'd have to get you a better answer than that.
Any other comments from the council? Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Any other questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Thank you. I got you.
You have affirmed every vote for the rest of the meeting.
What?
You have affirmed every vote for the rest of the meeting.
Good. Let's pack it up.
Thank you, counsel, for supporting this measure.
Thank you, counsel, for supporting this measure.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $6,000 to come from the Revoked Gaming Capital Projects Fund to be used to contract with Neil Schaefer Associates to provide a traffic impact study to determine the feasibility of a right-hand turn lane on Brownlee Road at the Airline Drive intersection as required by DOTD, first reading.
Some move. Second. Mark?
Is this something that we've always required when we did turn lanes or?
Well, in this case, uh, I've visited.
Or that was required of us, excuse me?
Um, well, when we build a, uh, a turn lane that hooks onto a state route, we need to get a project permit from DOTD and in this case, I've visited with Jim Olie, the traffic superintendent for this district and, uh, he asked that a study be done to determine if this was really warranted and that's what this is all about.
My question was, have we ever been required to provide this when we built turn lanes? Let's take, for instance, the first one.
Yes.
That we initiated on Airline Drive, the I-20. Do, did we have to do this?
I don't recall.
That's a good answer.
Well, I mean, I wasn't prepared, but, uh.
It's just, I don't remember having an ordinance on turn lanes that we've done.
Probably not because common sense says on that one there, there's too much traffic, you know, we can get rid of it.
But, I mean, I'm just asking, you know, when we spend money, that's our job, appears to ask questions.
Sure.
As to why we're spending and is, is it a necessity or is this just another?
This, this is a necessity. We're not gonna, I can't, uh, I'm not gonna be able to bring, set up plans for a turn lane on Brownlee Road on the Airline Drive over to the Highway Department and then give me a permit. They're gonna wanna know, is this warranted? Is it justified? And we, they're gonna wanna see a traffic study done.
Just for old time's sake, can we figure out if this is the first time we're having to do this?
I can. I can get you an answer on that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a tax auditor, first and final reading.
Some move. Second. Questions? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to replace a personnel records clerk due to a transfer to another department, first and final reading.
Some move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to replace a vacant senior wastewater treatment plant, treatment operator with a wastewater treatment operator, first and final reading.
Some move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution nominating for confirmation by the Bossier City Council Stacy Fernandez as the Director of Finance, first and final reading.
Some move. Second.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Somebody else wants to say something?
No, go ahead.
Stacy, I'm, I'm gonna look at you when I talk, cause, I'm for you as, as being our next finance director, a hundred percent. I'm just not for what the mayor's, and I've, I spoke with the mayor a couple of weeks ago. We had a nice cordial conversation and it was, you know, I enjoyed it. I'm just not for the salaries, starting somebody out at, at what a previous guy that worked for ten years to get to that point, you know? That's just, that's one of my points. I think the other one is, is we've got other department heads that's been here twenty, twenty-five years, you know, are, are still not to that point, you know? And I just, to me now, I just don't think it's fair. But I just want you to know, that's, that's my reason. It has nothing to do with you. I think, I wanna work with you, I think you'd be good, but it's just the salary, that's, that's my problem.
Hey, uh, address that, uh, Mr. Montgomery.
Sir?
May I make some remarks in the court?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, we did have a meeting and we, we disagreed and I guess we're gonna disagree right here. Uh, there is precedent for hiring replacement folks at, at salary of their predecessor. Uh, exceptions were made when Mr. Westbrook passed away. Uh, Stacy was asked to step in and handle that along with other duties and she did that for a year without any compensation and finally was moved up a little bit, about ten, fifteen thousand, but the records clearly show that that salary today with a man in it was about a hundred and five thousand dollars. The benefit package varies a little bit, but since the adjustments have been made within the Department of Finance, y'all have passed an ordinance showing that we are gonna save over fifty thousand dollars a year, every year, as a result of these changes and talking to Stacy, that looks like there may be another fifteen thousand. So my feelings is, she is a lady, but she is more knowledgeable, she's the most knowledgeable person we can get and our finances is the blood of our operation. If they're not managed right, everything goes wrong. So I think we should get the very best person available and that's Stacy and I think we should pay her at the salary of the predecessor.
Uh, just like I said, I, I'm for, but, but now you bring up, cause she's a lady and, and we paid the man, that, 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 to me, that's totally out of line because that, that don't even cross my mind, man.
Okay, then just go.
That's all.
Mr. Clark? It, um, seems to make sense for the, of the, um, experience and the, um, credentials that she has, that the, um, pay grade would match the job. It's the mayor's recommendation of, I don't see anything that's unfair about it. Um, matter of fact, it seems, well, it seems like it's equitable. That's my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, would, would there be ever a time that you would feel a person should not have the same salary as their predecessor?
It, the, uh, there's always a possibility depending what your potential, who the potential replacement was, so yeah, there's always a possibility, but generally, generally speaking, no. We're running the city now on about two hundred people less than we were about seven years ago. We've cut about a hundred people apart, as y'all well know, and on any given day, as you well know, we'll have about thirty people who are not available for one reason or another. You see that in the personnel reports. Then you got vacations, sick days, holidays, so these department heads have had to pick up the slack and they've done an admirable job of it and they should be compensated properly for doing that. So to answer your question, generally speaking, I would go for any replacement at the, at the salary of their predecessor, unless there were some extenuating circumstances.
Do you know what that would be?
It might be that, uh, the persons that we had, the pool of people we have to pick from might be such that we're having to consider hiring somebody that's not the most qualified. CPAs are very expensive, so in this case, for example, I wouldn't want to hire anybody that wasn't a CPA, but sometimes the pool of people available might not have all the desirable characteristics, but that's one example.
If I may, well, speaking of, uh, the pool of people available, did we, was, was this position advertised? Did we go out or did we only advertise? And when, and when did we advertise, if we did, within the city?
We, we did not and as is our standard procedure, we looked in-house to see if we have qualified people. Well, this was a very easy thing to do. When we looked in-house, we saw that Ms. Fernandez is extremely qualified, so it has been our practice when we have qualified people in-house, we can select them rather than going up for a different type of hiring process.
And I'll say a few words that is everyone on the council well aware of. I'm a former CPA, that was my field and I can certainly speak to the responsibilities that she has as the chief financial officer of a business that, you know, hundred million dollar business plus and, and managing the different enterprise funds and the different accounting systems and so forth and it, it's, it's a tremendous responsibility and, um, I can tell you that in the private enterprise world, that, that job that she is handling right now and, and doing one heck of a job and providing us information and so forth would be greatly over the salary that we're proposing to pay her today. And, and I know that, I don't like comparing, you know, that this is what the private sector is because, but, but in this case, when you're dealing with a specialty, whether it be a lawyer or a certified public accountant, those are all designations that, that demand that they be compensated if they're competent themselves and able to complete the job. So as a fellow CPA, I respect, uh, you and, uh, your position and, and what you do for the city and, and in this case, I'm for, uh, her being paid equally with her predecessor. So.
What, what's the, uh, what's the current salary?
It's around a hundred and five thousand plus benefits.
That's, that's what she's earning now?
No, no, no. I, I just, I'm just what the income would be. Stacy, what is it now about, uh, well, come step up and tell them what it is now and answer any other questions that may happen.
Uh, my current salary as purchasing agent is seventy-four thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a tax auditor, first and final reading.
Some move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one replacement police records clerk one due to a resignation from the department, first and final reading.
Some move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one fire department line employee to replace one firefighter position due to a retirement, first and final reading.
Some move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one fire department line employee to replace one firefighter position due to a termination, first and final reading.
Some move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution, sorry. Adopt a resolution to hire one recreation maintenance worker one to replace a vacant position in Parks and Recreation, first and final reading.
Some move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to fill two vacancies in the Public Works Department, first and final reading.
Some move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire one accounts clerk one and promote one position in the water billing and customer service department to backfill a utility billing and collection supervisor position, first and final reading.
Some move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution nominating for confirmation by the Bossier City Council Pam Glorioso as the city's chief administrative officer, first and final reading.
Some move. Second. Questions?
Will this, uh, Mr. Mayor, will this role that Ms. Gloroso will, will hold, uh, include the management or the monitoring of the three P contract?
She will be the media supervisor and director of public utilities and we will be working closely with their representatives. She's already been attending their meetings, she's been working closely with Ben, so she will be definitely involved with that, but we'll have oversight and involvement of the city attorney and I'll be asking him to also review and sound off him on any ordinances regarding public utilities.
Uh, you know, I, I feel that, uh, Ms. Gloroso has a lot of credentials and she will bring, um, stability to your office as she has already and I can, I can see that. My concern would be having someone who maybe have a background in engineering to make certain that the contractor that we have, the contract that we have with Manchak, that we get the best for our money and that may, in the future, include someone maybe with an engineering degree, maybe a consultant, part-time even, uh, to make sure of that. And I wonder if that's something that you've entertained.
Yes, I've thought about the potential somewhere down the road. There might be some reason to consider that, but I sure don't consider it right now. I think Ms. Glorioso is so knowledgeable, all the projects going on in the city, to include public utilities and having gone on her own to get with Ben and starting to get him brought up his feet on this and also having Mr. Hall involved for the fine details. No, they're not engineers, but I don't think we necessarily need an engineer. If we do, then I'll come before y'all and ask to hire one.
Mr. Oliver was an engineer, am I right?
He is. He is no longer with us.
Yes, sir, I understand, but that's what he brought to the table.
Well, he brought it to the table, but additionally, he did have those.
Sure.
Qualifications, which was unusual.
Exactly. Not that I'm not in favor of you, Pam, I, I am.
I mean, I'm just asking the question. We have an engineer, Mr. Hudson, who's a department head.
He stays so, he stays so busy.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying, it, for some type of consulting, like, I think what you're, you're speaking to is the expertise. I mean, at one time, I think Mark did run the, it, weren't you over that?
Yes, he was.
So, he, he, I mean, from a.
Yeah.
Of, of referral, or not referral, but consultation and.
Sure, I think Mr. Hudson has more than enough on this plate right now.
He said he's got plenty of time.
As a matter of fact.
He doesn't know what to do until after two o'clock.
We, you know, Cliff spent a whole, Cliff did spend a whole lot of hours, cause we, we met with him a lot, I mean, I mean, a lot of hours.
I know.
And I understand what Jeff's talking about.
And, and quite frankly, we, the administration, made the decision not to hire a replacement director for that department who was an engineer and we've been doing, I think, pretty darn good, particularly with the expertise we're getting from Ben and his counterparts.
Well, sure. Uh, I, I mean, Ben, he, he's, has a vested interest. Uh, I'm sure we get what we need to get from him, but we need someone who, uh, you know, who may film the other side of the fence, not, not on the same side, although we have a partnership and I understand that, but we, we still have to think about the, the best for the people's money in that, that contract.
Well, I can assure you, as we go down the road, Mr. Darby, if we recognize that we have the need of an engineer for public utilities, I'll be the first one to come for you and the rest of the council requesting that we acquire one.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Any other? Questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a sales tax accounts clerk three, first and final reading.
Some move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $120,000 to come from the 2017 sales tax bond issued to provide for Benoit value drainage study and mapping to be used as required for proper future development of lands generally located north of I-220 and between Airline Drive and Swan Lake Road, first reading.
Some move. Second. Any questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
And a notice that we're required to read today. We are hereby, the Bossier City Council canceling the June 27, 2017 agenda meeting and the July 6, 2017 regular meeting due to the lack of members that can attend the July 4 during that holiday week. All items introduced on June 13, 2017 will be considered for adoption on July 18 of 2017. Properly stated?
Yes, sir.
Notice given? And one other thing, since we did adopt the P3, our partnership with Man Shack, and just for the record, I'd like everybody to know that we have saved through 10 months over $3.7 million. Is that correct, Ben? So that's certainly ahead of the $2 million that we originally estimated, and, and quite possibly will hit over the $4 million savings mark, which is double what we had originally anticipated. So congratulations to Man Shack, congratulations to the mayor and the Water and Sewer Department and all of their employees for, as the mayor said, doing more with less and making it happen. Have a great week. Thank you all for coming. Meeting adjourned.